Number of projects. So, the standard of review again for general plan consistency is consistency with the overall arching objectives of the plan.
So, I believe there was one of the applicant, or one of the late submissions we got this afternoon pointed to case law that actually goes the opposite of that.
There is some case law out there that says that you can't be inconsistent with a policy that is fundamental, mandatory, and clear. What that means is a uncertainty and largely at the discretion of the court, it seems like, in those cases. But generally, cities are given substantial deference interpreting their general plan and determining whether the project is or is not consistent with the general plan.
Okay, let's do some interpreting then. Let's go to table two, page 29. The general plan. Specifically for the CR, spells out for...
Are you talking about the land use element?
Yes, it's not the housing element, yeah. It's page 29, land use element. Specifically, under CR, section B. This is what typical principal, principal uses. This is what's allowed. Residential units on the second floor and higher, integrated with commercial, provided that impacts are mitigated. Pretty clear. I think anybody can understand it. Are the impacts mitigated?
I know where you're going with this, and there's actually a recent case that's directly on point, and actually now there's two cases on point. You're talking about making CUP land use findings versus making SEQA significant impact findings, correct? So, what I hear you saying is, this says you have to have impacts mitigated.
So, those are impacts, other than SEQA impacts?
Yes. So, there's now been two cases that have kind of made the argument that you're suggesting, one of which...
I'm not suggesting.
Yes, but one of which...
I want to make sure it's bulletproof.
There were significant and unavoidable noise impacts, and the city made its CUP findings that there were no impacts to adjacent land uses. The Court of Appeal upheld that finding despite significant noise impacts from the EIR, finding that the city has discretion to balance those considerations. There was a recent case that also came out regarding transportation where there were, again, significant and unavoidable traffic impacts, and the city adopted a finding that there was adequate capacity or adequate transportation to suit the site, and the court said that finding significant unavoidable impacts does not mean that you do not have adequate transportation to the site. So, I would, I would recommend, so, I would recommend focusing upon the actual entitlement findings themselves, which is what is before you tonight.
So, where are the impacts that are referenced here on table two? Where are those defined?
I would say that they're defined by the city's previous interpretation of these policies.
We don't have that as a matter of direct reference. It may exist, we'd have to correlate it and...
The city has made those findings about balancing of those types of situations where you do have significant unavoidable impacts, but you still move forward.
Not SEQA-related impacts, but...
No, when you still have SEQA significant unavoidable impacts, and you can still move forward with adoption of, say, a CUP.
But I thought we had come to the conclusion that things were not necessarily, what's defined here as impacts...
Correct, correct.
Is not necessarily SEQA impacts.
Yes, and case law and the city's past interpretation allow a balancing of the entitlement factors.
I would just have to offer them that I have no idea what past interpretation of impacts has been, and is there any way we can find that?
You can look at, I believe, the, one of the Legato resolution that also had significant unavoidable transportation impacts and still adopted CUP findings.
I don't believe we did with Legato. Is that correct, Aaron? I don't think we had unmitigated traffic. They, they reduced things so that we didn't have that anymore.
That's correct, but, but we have, in fact, on this site, we've had significant unavoidable impacts on traffic previously, yet proceeded with the project. The impacts were SEQA impacts, and a statement of overriding consideration was adopted, weighing and balancing the economic, physical, social benefits of the project to the impact that could not be fully mitigated.
Our Tyson said that these may or may not be SEQA impacts. I'm, I'm looking for the other impacts that we need to address to make sure we're bulletproof on this.
And, and again, the, the project is largely, I mean, when, when we're finding general plan consistency here, we have a dozen general plan policies that this project meets.
How many dozen it meet?
I wouldn't tell you if there are others.
I believe, at least for the proposed project, an individual policy inconsistency was disclosed regarding the height because it was not in addition to an existing structure. That's not the case with alternative four one.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold on that one for now. And I will hold there for a minute and let someone else take a chance.
Commissioner Earl.
All right, just to, since we were talking about traffic, a few thoughts on traffic. The, that first intersection on 177th, where you come in from Hawthorne Boulevard, that intersection there, it's a difficult place to make left turns right now. Is there, I don't know that a signal's appropriate there, but is there something that would be appropriate at the intersection to either for the residential making a left turn out towards Hawthorne, or if you're coming from the islands Panera side, making a left on 177th West Pound? Is there any suggestions for that intersection, how we can improve that?
Right now, there are no suggestions for that intersection. It currently operates as an unsignalized location with a stop controlled along three of the four approaches. It's something that could be reviewed and monitored as time goes on for determination of an improvement to be made.
All right, yeah, that, I know switching to residential components probably can address that traffic flow, but I know that the goal obviously is to get cars off Hawthorne, which is why they have the non-signalized stop on their direction, but the other three directions get, get stuck as a result, so, yeah, that may be something worth considering. Another longer-term question, is there any plans for that, the weird curve Kingsdale takes in front of Target? That parking really isn't needed there. Target's got vastly more parking than they could ever need. Are there any plans at any point to straighten that a little bit? I know the transit center's going in next door, but...
No, there is a plan for signalization on Kingsdale, adjacent to the transit center, to allow pedestrians to cross from the transit center to the living space property and then make their way through. That's fee-owned property of the former Levitt's Furniture Store that was there. There's a major resurfacing project planned, and curb gutter and other improvements for Kingsdale, but the, the curve remains. We'd like to actually slow cars down on the street, and widening would not, not be a preferred way to do that at that south end of the drive there.
Thank you. And then, at the intersection of 182nd and Inglewood, that southbound left turn during peak hours can really just muck up traffic. Are there, I know it didn't reach the level of significance, but are there potential, is anyone looking at maybe no left turns during peak hours, particularly PM, I think?
Spencer, he's probably not aware that the city's undertaking a study of Inglewood from, from Artesia South to one, to 190th, and we're, we're going to look at peak hour restrictions on left turns and trying to provide better traffic flow through that area. It'll all be done with an existing right-of-way, with the exception of perhaps the left turn for southbound Inglewood, but the city has that scheduled in its CIP. It's not a project condition of this project.
Sure, no, thank you. And then, one other thought that may tie in with that, this doesn't really affect peak traffic, but Inglewood between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Grant on the Redondo side turns into a parking lot on week, or a used car lot on weekends. I know Lawndale actually has municipal code 10 dot 60 dot 020, on-street vehicle with signs prohibited. That would get rid of a lot of the clutter along Inglewood. Again, not going to affect peak times, which are weekdays, but that might be something useful to consider. But that's all I had on traffic. Thank you.
We'll do a few more.
So, just to clarify, these haven't been, have they, the residential been disclosed as condos or apartments yet?
The applicant clarified in the, and we added in the final EIR disclosure that it is proposed for renters.
For renters, so apartments?
Correct.
Okay. So, let's go to, some of the discussion that, that's come up has been how this affects our RENA numbers moving forward. There's been some cautionary language that if we don't approve the residential of this, it could negatively impact zoning on other areas. What's our build-out right now compared to the, the RENA that we have a remaining 1345 or something like that, I believe?
Yeah, that, that, the numbers, we visit the numbers. We have a number of programs within the recently adopted housing element that speak to looking at each project that comes in and how it relates to the RENA numbers. With that, we have a number of sites. There's a table I'm reading from here, right from our housing element, that shows the sites that make up...
Which table is that, Sean? I can...
You don't have that. We, we just have that, you know, for our reference in case this issue comes up. So, I'd be more than happy to share it. I've got a couple of copies of it.
But it's not in the housing element?
Oh, it's in the housing element, yes.
Which page is it?
Oh, you've got the housing element there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, I do too. Hang on a sec.
I carry it with me everywhere I go.
It is...
Is that true? It's a good workout.
Prefer to page 87.
And we're, we're in the housing element, correct?
Correct.
The latest revision.
Correct.
Okay.
That has, that is a residential development potential on underutilized sites in Redondo Beach. So, these are the sites that are housing sites for capacity, for meeting our RENA obligation with specific sites, as well as the densities, the residential densities, and then the number of units that can be generated from those sites. Now, if you, if you look at the income requirement, 30 dwelling units per acre is for affordable housing. We have a total capacity of 640 units. The requirement for affordability adds up to 595, so we have a little cushion.
And how much of those are in this, the project currently before us? How much of that allocation would be there? We're losing some of that allocation, correct? Because none of this is low income.
No, we're not losing any. These are, the sites that I'm identifying are affordable, and they don't include this site. So, we have, we have enough 640 units, capacity with, outside of this project, that have the right density above 30 units.
Okay, so if, I guess the, the end question would be, if no residential was put in the Galleria whatsoever, would our other capacity meet RENA? It sounds like it would.
It would, yes, yes.
So, we're not in trouble there?
We're not in trouble. We're, we're not in trouble, no. We do have capacity.
It's a healthy margin. It's not wired in.
Are you discussing affordable units or the total RENA allocation now?
I could address both, Tyson, that's a good point.
Yes, there is a, a difference. Affordable, this part, project, since it doesn't have affordable, doesn't really have any impact on how we're, our capacity.
There was nothing allocated from this site for affordable, is that correct?
Correct.
For any level of affordability?
At the moment, yes.
And then, is the, are the calculations based upon the realistic net capacity or the maximum residential?
Realistic.
Okay, so, and the realistic is a fair number. Don't argue with that at all, but that is considerably lower than the maximum. So, if we, if we did include the maximum, we'd have even a greater buffer. So, we're not in trouble. We're not up against a wall, anything.
The issue there is, is the State Department of Housing and Community Development doesn't accept the maximum. They only accept the reasonable.
Okay.
That's why those numbers are all factored down.
Correct. And who determines what the realistic is?
It's called our default density. It's imposed by HCD, which is, for affordable, it's 30 units per acre, minimum density, to meet an, it's affordable by, there's default. That's our default density.
Okay, so, the implications were that by doing this project, that's before us this evening, at 300, at market rate, it's going to, that alone could put pressure on other areas for the low income, but you're saying that we didn't include any low income in this, in the analysis?
That's correct.
So, we're clear with that. And it doesn't seem to put any pressure outside of, you know, on other properties, just in bulk numbers, in the, the overall. We've, we've got margin.
Correct, yes. We have a lot of capacity for moderate and above-market. Not a lot, but some.
Okay, so that, but there seemed to be, kind of be a warning, I would call it a warning, that if we decided not to approve the housing aspect of this...
We're on a margin here. There aren't a lot of units that we can reduce before we fall below and have to rezone sites.
Rezone with the aspect of affordability, or...
For both, both purposes.
For both.
For total housing unit count and for affordability.
I just thought we discussed that we, we had a safe margin for RENA.
Well, well, I wouldn't say a safe margin. We have a 45-unit there buffer.
It's close.
But I believe you're discussing for the affordable. You're not talking about the above or the moderate.
Or market, correct.
And for conversation purposes, just if I can jump in real quick, I mean, you could make a strong argument that of all the places in this city that you could get in a decent number of housing, I mean, there's really no other place that would adhere the way this site does. Am I right? I mean, I'm not going out on a limb on this.
Well, we do have our mixed-use zoning designations that also have a high-density allocation, which meets the state requirements for affordability.
But the reality is, is that frankly, if we're going to have higher density or increased density of housing, the last place we want it is where it's going to generate even additional traffic throughout the rest of the city. Here, at least, it's closer to arterials, freeway access, transit lines, and all the rest of that.
Good point.
I think we would agree with that generally.
So, moving along with that, there's, mentioned earlier the interaction with measure DD, which is now, what, Title 27?
Article 27.
Yeah. Could any of this lead to an interplay with DD that we had to upzone areas with, by mandate, we would have to upzone potentially, state mandate? And how would that interplay with DD? Would it still have to go to a vote, or does the mandate just throw DD out the door?
We've had, we've had some discussion on this.
It's an interesting question.
I bet it's a fun discussion.
It's a question that remains...
There would definitely be issues of state preemption in that question.
There are also clauses in Article 27 that speak to affordable housing development and affordable housing projects. So, we can't really answer that in the context of this meeting tonight, but there may be some exemptions for...
And I'm just looking at the bigger picture, because part of the implications of this is, you know, it leads to issues further down the road, especially should we deny specifically the housing aspect of the current project.
Yes.
So, it remains an unanswered, hypothetical, nobody knows yet, and I understand that. There are so many things that have to interplay, the state laws and preemption, as Tyson had alluded to. Okay, so that covers that one. And, but you had said that the, relative to the income levels, this site was not included in those inventories. I'll give him a minute. Did you find something fun?
What's that? I'm sorry, we were consulting, excuse me, what was the question?
We were, well, we were discussing the current RENA allocation, which is 1397.
But we've built out some of that. I think it's down to 1345?
Actually, it's down now to 1,184.
But if you look at table H44 in the current housing element in terms of the total number of units potentially built out, you have 1,658, including the Galleria site at 300 or 298 units. So, as Aaron said, you know, if you were to not include any residential, you would definitely be skirting. Page number...
97?
88 in the 2017 midterm update.
H...
H44.
Is not on page 88.
Yeah, 87.
87, but, okay. It's the same, no, that's, that's this table, H46.
It's H44...
We're having trouble with numbers tonight.
Yeah, page 87 on my version, I'm...
I printed this out today.
Did you?
It's, it is the table titled Residential Development Potential on Underutilized Sites in Redondo Beach.
Okay. All right, I'll have to go back through that.
I have the table two, if you have any, need any numbers from it.
You what?
I've got the table two, if you need any numbers from it.
Interaction with DD confirmed that's an unknown yet. Just to go back to the Quimby fees real quick, it is 25K per unit, correct?
Per net new unit, yes.
Per net new, and we are looking at 300 net new units. When's that payable?
7.5 million.
Yeah.
When is it payable?
When, yeah, no, the 7.5 million, thank you.
It's going to be...
When do we collect on that?
It's, it's usually on issuance of permit. That would be...
Is that defined somewhere?
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be paid upon permit issuance, because that's when the fee, the fee is collected.
And then, just to sort of went to where, what's going on with that, the Quimby fees, they are, they have to be used within a certain radius of that site?
Any, any in-lu fees need to be used of benefit to the, the property that just don't giving those fees? They have to be used within five years. There are other restrictions on the use of, of in-lu fees, so, and they, they cannot be used for routine maintenance, they're for improvement, they're for acquisition, expansion, improvement.
Improvements can be, yeah, they can be used.
Improvement, and that could be replacement of equipment.
Not maintenance, but true improvements, adding new equipment.
Correct, correct.
Replacing, you know, old equipment, not maintaining old equipment, but replacing, but it is within a certain radius, I believe, of...
There isn't a defined by law radius, but, but we make every effort to use the fees within the area impacted. I mean, that's, that's the goal of mitigation fees.
It's a nice chunk of change. Doesn't buy a lot, not in Redondo Beach. You know, a million here, a million there, pretty soon we're talking sort of real money, but not these days, so...
Not, not off-topic, but GPAC is probably recommending 5 acres per thousand. So, those of you that are on GPAC know this, so, it, it's expensive to acquire land, and therefore mitigation fee is quite high.
I appreciate that you brought up the GPAC. What's been the GPAC input to the, the Galleria area?
Well, you know, they have draft, only at this point, draft, draft plan recommendations. So, I, they're really not formally adopted or releasable at this point.
Galleria excluded from those discussions?
Excluded, well, no, the Galleria's been a, a topic of great discussion by the committee. In fact, the Galleria and all of the property around the Galleria has, has been discussed.
Jennifer, you're on the GPAC, is that...
I'm sorry, what?
The Galleria's been discussed quite a bit, the whole...
Widely, in the area around the Galleria, everything.
So, but none of that input would apply to this project?
It's only draft recommendations. We have to follow the policies and plans in effect at the time this was, was filed. I can say generally that GPAC sees this as a site for revitalization, absolutely. There actually, at least a draft recommendation is to increase some residential densities in the area, but only as a way to transfer density from other areas of the community. There's a strong desire to develop office use on some of the other properties surrounding this site. So, there are a number of different recommendations, but the committee has not voted on those final recommendations.
And additionally, remember, those will also have to go to city council and then ultimately go out to the public for the vote as well.
And they come to the planning commission.
I understand that.
Yeah, they can, that's why we should be talking about it.
We're going to get in trouble with our city attorney here in a second.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is, this is not a thing we should be talking about, yeah.
With regard, again, to the residential, that's going to be broken into how many different lots? The besting? Each floor is an individual lot?
No.
The whole property was four different lots.
Was.
Is, that's what the plan was, that they said the whole property was divided into...
They want 59 lots now.
We're looking at the subject map right now.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the breaking it up.
So, for that residential structure, the tract map 74481 shows about six lots for that structure, and then there will be two other lots for the retail component.
And these are airspace breakdowns.
Right.
Which is predominantly a financing-type issue. I am curious to see, to ask maybe the applicant, why break it down as each floor as an individual lot? What is the, just for understanding, what's the driver behind that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what it's not, and if this was a condominium project, it would have been broken down to the individual unit with common areas as a separate lot, then again, so, as a, as a...
You said condominium?
If it was.
Oh, if it was, okay.
And it's not that, so I want to, I want to make sure that we're very clear. Oftentimes, at this point in a project, we will, we will file for more lots than, than perhaps are necessary to grant us flexibility as we go for either building types, for financing, for partnerships, for other land use that is facilitated by more lots existing on the tentative tract map rather than fewer, to avoid process down the road as well.
It, it leads me to believe that, call it in an abundance of caution, you're doing that now, should you want to convert it to a condominium type.
Allow me to be clear, it is not our intent to, to, to convert this to condominiums, nor is it our intent to create condominium units. We'll start there. If we did, if we did, now this is hypothetical, if we did create condominium units, this map would look incredibly different.
Right, because you're going for the rent. I mean, that's the income that you're going to be generating for yourself.
When they're built, we will rent them.
Right, yeah.
Well, I would point out that the city has, for the last 30 years, had a restriction on conversion of rental units to condominium purposes. In the last 30 years, there has not been a, well, 30, yeah, in the last 30 years, there has not been a condo conversion. Each year, we survey our rental vacancy. If it, if it arises past a trigger point, which I think is a 6% rate, there can be applications entertained. So far, we've never hit that point, and so therefore, there's, I doubt there will ever be a conversion opportunity.
Okay, going back to the statement of overriding conditions. You quote some government code here, as well as assembly bills. I'm finding that they are, I'm going to call it severely truncated from what the full text of those references read, and it appears to me that it's done in a way to favor the statement of overriding conditions. We can get into the specifics, specific aspects of that, but overall, this is really misleading, and I would go so far as to say that it's, that makes it not fact-based, and Tyson, correct me if I'm wrong, that any statement of overriding considerations really has to be in some way fact-based. Is that correct?
Facts are part of the statement of overriding considerations, that's correct.
Part of, or, because I can read from the SEQA document, further than, I believe, than what you're saying, and maybe I'm, I'm off on this, but includes facts, reasonable assumptions predicated upon facts, and expert opinion supported by facts. It's not argument, speculation, or unsubstantiated opinion or narrative evidence which is clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence of social... So, it has to be fact-based. That's a SEQA requirement.
You're discussing the standard, or the definition of substantial evidence. I'm happy to give you the language for the provisions for statement of overriding considerations.
Which is not, does not include substantial evidence?
One moment, let me bring it up. So, this is under SEQA Guidelines, section 15093. It says SEQA requires the decision-making agency to balance, as applicable, the economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits, including region-wide or statewide environmental benefits of a proposed project, against its unavoidable and... including region-wide or statewide environmental benefits of a proposed project against its unavoidable environmental risks when determining whether to approve the project. If the specific economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits, including region-wide or statewide environmental benefits of a proposal, of a proposed project outweigh the unavoidable adverse environmental effects, the adverse environmental effects may be considered acceptable. So, there are other factors in there, legal, social, technological, and so on. Correct, and I would say that the comment letter from Unite here was mixing discussion of SEQA findings with a statement of overriding considerations. There is a provision for employment workers discussed when finding something infeasible. That language is not found in the discussion of statement of overriding considerations, so they were mixing those two concepts up.
Fair enough. Is... Is there any allocation within this for specifically paid, other than normal taxes and so forth, for the additional police? I apologize that I don't have, I didn't find it, but is there something in there that's a specific call-out, other than what we would get through any normal route?
We have extensive conditions on...
I'm talking money, not, not...
Not a dollar allocation?
Facilities or cooperation, but dollars, 'cause it takes dollars to send police there, to have police staff there if we do that. It'd be good for the city, but it takes dollars.
Well, what you're looking at is the applicant, applicant has had extensive discussions with our chief of police on safety and security, and this, this project has very innovative crime prevention strategies and technologies that will be extremely... And I can't really tell you what those all are, because I don't want the bad guys to know what those all are.
I know some of them are, yeah, I appreciate that.
That's just not a good thing to say, but they have come to an agreement with the chief of police and the police department that is represented by the list of conditions you see on a police safety and security and policing plan. The idea is that the police will shift a number of different resources here and actually create a fourth, I think it's called a fourth beat, which gives much better protection, not only to this site, but to areas of North Redondo. The applicant would be responsible for their share of those costs. And I don't know what those dollars are, but, but it's a healthy chunk of crime prevention money.
There's some direct dollars.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I was looking to hear. Thank you. Resolution, item number 19. Seems pretty vague. It's a good intended statement. We've run across this before, we had some similar things with North Redmond. So, project information officer is assigned, you know, wants somebody there to, basically somebody there to complain to is what it sounds like. And shall provide community updates every 10 years, once a month, once a week. I think we need some more, our construction hotline phone number shall be dedicated. We all love hotlines, they go to a recording, nobody ever calls you back.
And this has come up before with another project where we had to make sure that we had the 24-hour, yeah. So, that, that should be fleshed out a little bit more.
I think we have some precedence there, and it's a good idea, too.
Exactly, yes.
Is that what this is really for, is, it's a complaint line, and information passed out. Here's what's going on to maybe preclude some complaints, but...
It's very effective, and we want a live person answering that phone.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why I came with North Redmond, that was the importance of that.
Is it a 24-hour deal?
Well, it needs to be 24 hours, that's what we decided for North Redmond. That's what was our precedent, yes.
So, live person, 24 hours?
Yeah, because if not, things don't get addressed.
And that's not overreaching, because there are services that will, I mean, during the working hours, they'll have their own, but they can have a live person answer your telephone.
But we're talking not just during working hours, 24 hours?
24 hours, yeah, that was what we set with the North Redmond.
And how, what do we do to, project information officer, somebody they designate, I'm assuming this isn't a city staff? How do we know who that is? How do we know that they're current? You know, things change in a project, this is a three and a half year, I believe, timeframe. A lot of things happen in three and a half years, personnel change, and, you know, I think we need some more definition there. Let's make this effective, let's make it good for the community. And as far as, how do we, what can we do there to, I'm looking for input?
We have the verbiage in, for the North Redmond that we came up with, which I think we need to go revisit that. And it says 24 hours, and...
We will have that for you, keep going.
A similar line, the officer shall provide community updates through a city website, through a city website? We're gonna...
No.
No?
No, that's wrong.
I'm sorry, but that's what it says.
Yeah, but you're right, it's wrong.
How are we gonna change that?
QIC website.
Through what?
QIC website, or...
Perhaps I can help you out a little bit?
Yes, that'd be great, John, thank you.
So, one of the benefits of being an asset like, like the gallery is that there's 24-hour security, and it's manned by a human being all the times, and underneath that 24-hour security, there are protocols that go to another live person that is directly tied to either the operations of the shopping center or the development of the shopping center. And to be honest, oftentimes, it's me, and so I've been woken up on many Sunday mornings, and I've been woken up in the middle of a Wednesday night as well. On top of that, we have agreements with the police force, so that if it's a matter of fire, life, or safety, there's an avenue that goes there directly and quickly, and it's protocols that we train on often. If it's a matter of violation, certainly there needs to be city protocol underneath, but it's something that, that we can stand up and walk right outside if there's work going on at night, and we can deal with it immediately and remedy it the following. So, that might help you understand the protocols that we are used to imply or implementing on a job of this magnitude for the duration of the job. The, the other aspect was outside of the construction, which was, how do we interact with the community? Is there a website? Are there common updates? We're not doing our job if we're not understanding what the community is thinking at all times. And in the event that there are organizations, so oftentimes that's Neighborhood Watch, or it's a Neighborhood Association, or there are other city-backed organizations where residents will gather commonly. We love invitations to those, and we'll be at every single one of them. That is really, really important to look ahead to say, especially in construction, this is what's gonna happen next, and you should be aware of this. And, oh, that, that happened in the past, how, how can we do that better? That is a QIC employee, it'll be a consistent QIC employee who has authority to make a difference and change it in real time.
And there'll be signage which will indicate the website and the phone number.
There's ordinance and stuff, but, but the ordinance oftentimes doesn't do it.
Right.
Because it's a high-touch business, and we need, and, look, this is our neighbors, and this is our community, and it's in our best interest to do this.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, you need the signage, 'cause nobody's gonna know where the QIC website is. Nobody's gonna know that phone number, nobody's gonna know, they're gonna be calling the city and say, what's going on?
The city has regulations and an ordinance that requires construction information signage be posted at all times with a live number for complaints, call this number. That would be, there would be two numbers there, there'd be a city number, and there would be a number for an onsite manager at all times.
And I think on North Redmond, we agreed to put the police number, if I remember correctly, we'll get that information, but is that appropriate here? And I appreciate your input, we don't know going into this, though.
Understood.
That's why putting more definition to it does nothing but help.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, is the sign, I keep imagining this little 12-by-12 sign that's on the, that's on a fence with a sharpie.
That's faded and blows off, anyway.
Is that the...
This, this project will have, I'm sure, marquee signage at the corners. They're allowed four, four-by-foot signs for construction for this project.
We went through this with Legato, and everybody tried to call the Legato number, nobody ever answered, nobody responded. Now, that wasn't during construction, but... John, do you have some, it looks like a pretty long verbiage.
It's a very long condition, very detailed, I think it is.
Read it out, maybe the applicant would say yes.
Put some work into it, I remember.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
The construction signs shall be posted with construction days and hours listed, along with a 24-hour contact name and phone number clearly listed on the sign. The signage will also include the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of the assigned City of Redondo Beach Community Development Department staff. Signage will also include Redondo Beach Police Department contact information. In the event the reportable action occurs during non-business hours, the content, number, and location of construction information signage shall be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department prior to the issuance of grading and/or building permits. If noise, traffic, vibration, air quality, odor, and/or other construction-related complaints are reported, the Building Division Code Enforcement Department will investigate and follow standard due-process procedures for remediation that may include, but is not limited to, the immediate issuance of a stop-work notice until corrective measures, as determined by the Community Development Department, are completed. In the event that complaints are registered with the Redondo Beach Police Department during non-business hours, they will be referred to the Building Division Code Enforcement Department at the start of the next business day for investigation.
We did a good job, I think.
Did the applicant, any issue with any of that?
I think that would be the minimum standard for us.
All right.
To be honest.
Always good to hear.
Well, if we could do better, just...
With, with the, I would say, the addition of language that the 24-hour would specifically go to a live person. I don't think that was in there.
Let's see, construction employees are, okay. The, let's see, we had the neighborhood outreach meetings before the submittal. Let's see. Oh, the one I just read?
Within the one you just read.
It's in there, it's in there.
Oh, was it in there?
Did it specifically say a live person?
It's there, I know it's there, because it was a big thing. Yeah, it's there.
I think staff and the commission and the applicant are all on agreement to replace item number 19 with the verbiage, verbatim. I don't have that number, what that...
Yeah, the reso, resolution number 2018-01-PCR-001. Oh, condition 31.
Okay, we gotta see that one. Moving on to item number 20, just below that. How do we enforce that? This is the construction shall include required use of a tier for off-road construction equipment, and haul truck fleet meets or exceeds the emission standards of a 2012 truck engine.
We are out there. That's part of the permit issuance, those are conditions of a permit to do work on this site.
Do we follow up and enforce it?
We do, we do, and in fact...
Proactively or reactively?
That's a proactive situation, on, in terms of the fleet, fleet fueling, fleet management, and, and review of the emissions class, maybe, here's your applicant, maybe he's got some more to say.
John's back.
The helpful thing about, thank you, the helpful thing about this being in a condition so clearly is that we can also use it when we go to bid for the, for the work, so it becomes a requirement of the contractor to provide that. And so, it's, it's in some essence self-policing as well.
So, it does have some teeth behind it.
It does.
Okay, very good. Resolution 25, and this one will go to the applicant, I guess, again. Shall encourage employees and patrons to use bus services. This really ties into the whole thing of the traffic issues and all of that. Pretty vague, pretty open. How do you, how can we specify that you actually would encourage or...
I mean, metrics?
Metrics, methods, anything with a little more than just, yeah, we'll encourage you.
You can't require them, but this goes back to what we asked, well, actually, one of my very first questions, too, which was about providing transit passes and other kind of things along those lines, to encourage employees to take transit.
And let's take the obvious.
But you can't say, sorry, you can't drive.
The obvious is there's a transit center, it's gonna be there, that's a, that's a big deal. I mean, that, that really helps, really helps, and then you got the green line coming, too, I mean, that's really gonna help.
I'm more focused on the words, the applicant shall encourage employees.
I think the next component of this is their TDM plan, which needs to be submitted and specify measures that they're going to undertake. And our, our local ordinance requires, even for small projects, transit information stations, certain flexible schedules be offered to employees. So, our rideshare coordinator and transit manager works with companies to create the TDM plan and to connect the employees at businesses with transit and transit passes. So, there's a whole TDM outreach and, and integration with the city.
But Commissioner Glad is correct, legally, you can't mandate ride-sharing, van pooling, or car pooling.
Right.
Can't mandate, but I was just looking for a little bit further definition than just, it's, it just comes across as wishy-washy and one of those nice word kind of things.
Well, the TDM plan is what has the meat on it, and that's, that's your...
And the transit passes, that's a very good motivation. I mean, I remember at North Redmond, we got all kinds of things that just really wanted to motivate people to do it.
And we have a network to make, to make our tenants aware of what's available, and they in turn can inform their employee base as well. And we have regular mall meetings and tenant meetings where we'll discuss either events or changes that may be coming along, or activations in the shopping center, and certainly transportation, parking, policies are a big part of that. We have an opportunity to do that when they're new to the shopping center, and then on a quarterly basis, when we meet with the tenants.
I'm gonna go back to 19 that we covered just briefly before. One of the things I think we should add to that list, and it is an extensive list, but it's all doable, is to list the QIC website. I don't think we did that with the prior reso, but with this one, it would be appropriate.
If we could go just another word further and just say project website?
Yeah.
Because I think that would be a little bit...
Wherever you're gonna put that information.
More effective for the user.
And then, how often, you know, how often do you do community, those community updates? It says, the officer shall provide community updates through a, which will now be a QIC website.
Project.
Project website.
Project website, I'm sorry, yeah, project. Often...
Digitally, it's very easy to keep it updated, and it's in our best interest to do so. We usually attend community meetings when invited, and, and our network is strong to make ourselves available to that. That tends to be on an invite basis, but from a digital standpoint, it's in our best interest to update it often, like in real time. You want, you want more?
I really do, I'm looking for, you know, some kind of...
You want, you want a...
Actually, a metric, is it monthly?
Shall we, shall we say a timeframe?
Weekly has been a standard we've used for public projects, that every week, the residents hear about what's gonna happen next week. Kind of forward-looking.
Sure.
And when our construction project managers, when we're tearing up neighborhoods, provide weekly updates, and I think that weekly is a good frequency.
So, we can add that verbiage to everything else that we had before, that the office, officer shall provide weekly community updates through a project website?
The officer, is it the officer?
Not the officer, with the website, the project, project website.
But that's the way that the verbiage says, the officer shall provide, through a website.
Through a project website.
Project website.
Weekly is what we're saying.
Oh, their public...
Weekly, yes.
In agreement on that?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that seems almost excessive, but if you're in agreement to it, and that's a standard, Aaron, I'm...
Next week, we're gonna pour concrete to expect to see a gizilly and concrete trucks coming through.
Way of managing this, and it's, next week, we're going to be grading and compacting the site, and that's going to last for... People like, they can schedule, people actually do schedule. I think I'll go on a nice vacation during that little activity, but it can happen.
And you'll look forward as far as you can, maybe, you have different aspects, what's coming up this week, what's coming up in the next month?
Certainly, certainly we will.
Put a Gantt chart, I don't know what...
Certainly, we will, and we would wanna, we would wanna comply with the normal business that staff's recommended. If that's weekly, then that's weekly.
It is, and we will sit down before any permits are issued and look at the entirety of the project construction schedule and have milestones, and that information is good to share with the neighbors, so they know what's going on, and so...
In my experience, that forward information helps a lot.
So, Sean, is that clear enough that we're gonna add that verbiage in there?
Yes.
"The officer shall provide weekly community updates through a project website page, as well as periodic email blast." Period, I'm okay with that. What's periodic to you? I'll take your word for that one.
Well, I like the word periodic, because I also don't like the word pest, and if I get them too often, they become pesterly, right? So periodic, I think, seems to be fair. I mean, what is it to me? I, I don't know, is it semi-annually, is it quarterly?
Yeah, I'm thinking quarterly is a number that I would come up with.
I think it would depend on whether there's something that they actually need to email about, right?
Yeah, what phase the project is in, what's going on.
If we leave it at periodic, then they can...
Yeah, and if there's a problem, they'll come here and they'll tell us, and then we're going to get the whip and, you know, say, "Hey."
I'm going to be right back here, and I'll have to amend our practice.
No, they'll call the Community Development Department and complain, and then they'll call the police, and then they'll call your live person, and get to you.
Look at me, on Wednesday at 3:00 in the morning.
And you'll be coming before, saying, "Can we reduce this?"
Right, exactly. So there you go.
Anybody else have anything while I'm organizing my thoughts?
Okay.
Give me a break, Dan. Let me gather things over here.
Is it possible to get a project map on the screen at all?
Project map? Site plan?
Site plan, yes, sorry. Sorry, I just had some thoughts on the overall site itself that maybe other commissioners would like to give feedback on, or the applicant. But some of the things, I've heard a lot of great feedback. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Appreciate all the written comments and the public comments, all of staff's time, the applicant's time. A lot of people have given a lot of input into this, and so it's, it's very helpful. A few of the things that I've heard, though, that, that definitely resonate with me, you know, just no particular order. One is office space. I've heard a lot of people ask for office space. That makes sense to me. You have creative office space, or this Class A office space. The applicants also said, you know, 100 more office space, if it works out, would, would certainly be in your interest, too. Did I hear correctly at some point, though, that, I think I heard somewhere around 175,000 square feet of office space? Once you hit that, you start creating some traffic impacts or other impacts? Or is there some limit to how much office space you could replace retail with before you start causing other issues?
Honestly, I think I should defer to staff or the, or the traffic consultant to get you precise feedback.
You are correct. A sensitive analysis was conducted, and it was determined that 179,000 square feet of office in exchange for retail space could be installed on the site before generating a new significant impact.
Okay. So we could, we could, instead of 50,000 office space, it could be up to 175,000, and there's no impact, just swapping retail?
No additional new impact.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's, that's helpful. I don't know if, if there's interest for that, but that, that seems like it could be a good fit for that location, the traffic space. Other things, someone mentioned about being able to walk over to Sprouts. There's some of the, the, between vehicle parking on that other lot, which you obviously don't control, but there's, there's concrete sidewalks where you're not actually walking between cars. You have a little bit more space. Actually, working with the, with your neighbors might be something useful there, something to throw out there. But some of the other interesting things, so looking at the project, that major retail two, I believe it is, right there in the corner, a lot of the renderings, a lot of it's, it's, it's very box-like. It's, this is a major entrance to the city, and it's a major gateway. And when you look at the residential, you've got balconies, you've got windows, there's a lot of different things going on there. But even with the public art on that corner, it feels, it feels like you could do more there to really draw people in and kind of welcome. You look at something like the Americana, where they've got those elements that really, you know, it's, and obviously, the renderings are basic. That's not what's going to actually end up being there, but...
Certainly, and, and the intent is certainly to deliver articulated architecture that, that gives you relief from that big box feeling, because I think we would wholeheartedly agree with you that building a simple box on the gateway corner would, would fly in the face of everything that we've said this evening. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, even something like, and, and so like, something at the hotel aesthetically is so much more appealing on the corner, although I think from looking at it, the driveway access and whatnot doesn't work with the hotel, that location, so that, that makes sense. But, but yeah, something, something really more at that corner to draw people in, whether that's a little bit more of a setback with some art, or, or windows, or some other treatment.
If you actually go to the image that has the entry gateway, it's like slide 32, it shows that corner.
So that's the residential, the right side?
That's what I'm saying. It shows a bit of that if you go to that slide 32.
Oh, which one?
The landscaping is, is significant as well. The, the landscape buffer between the face of the curb and the face of that building is much more significant than anything that exists out there today. That'll help.
Sure.
Palm trees.
32. Palm trees.
Palm trees.
Might be cut off for the...
No, that was an earlier one. I mean, it doesn't show the full, but it does show some landscaping and also the interesting sort of architectural component that looks like lights shining through.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has a skin.
Yeah, and there's the public art element at the corner, too. And then the, the open space, the community park, and those, those are great. I mean, you go to the point or something like that, and, and to your point, it's fantastic for families with kids, because the kids can go run around and play. The interactive public art's fantastic. I think that's a great concept. I wonder if there's some way to, so those, having the scale of the, that central area from the point is useful there. That certainly gives a good sense of perspective. One of the things, just wondering if there's some way we can make those areas larger, though, because you look at the point, and it's got an FAR of about 0.33 versus 1.5 here, and you've got multiple parks and multiple walkways, and those, those areas between are really nice. But that, that central retail 11 kind of gets in the, kind of blocks between the different parks and kind of cuts things off a little bit. So if you look at something like major retail three on the south side there, something like the bottom floor, that seems like a great place for a food hall or something like that, but there's not a massively significant outdoor space to where you could have programming with that or, or other elements.
I think that speaks to our intent. It's difficult to show in one rendering, or especially in an overall plan, because it does look like a central green space, and that's it. And you don't understand, and it's difficult to convey the relationship between any activation in retail or in leisure with, with that green space. And I think it's also important to remember that that green space goes in a, in a linear fashion to either side of the property. So it's, it's not just isolated as a circular around Central Court as, as we all might be used to seeing, but it also tentacles out into different parts of the property. The integration between, between the existing shopping center and what is new, and the open space and, and, and restaurant or food hall activation is really critical. I mean, if, if we don't get that right, then it doesn't feel authentic, and if it's not authentic, then we're not going to be proud. And so that is one place that we spend a lot of time on in the design phase.
Yeah, I mean, you talk about authentic, like a food hall or something like that, there's local chefs and all that.
That's fantastic. It's authentic. It feels right.
Yes, that's, and that's something that's really missing from North Redondo and the surrounding area.
Yeah, it's got high quality.
Yeah, we go to El Segundo, we go to Manhattan Beach, we go to Hermosa. We don't have anything in the area that, that meets that fit, so that's, you know, we get an incredible opportunity here.
Sure.
Or Fashion Island.
That's a little bit...
We're going to give you a reason not to drive south.
It's like I do.
That's outside my bubble.
Yeah, that's exactly right, though. I mean, but I, I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but when I go shopping or when I go to a restaurant, I don't go to Redondo.
Yeah.
I don't go to the gallery.
We heard the same from the community this evening.
I don't feel safe. I would not take my eight-year-old daughter there currently. But hopefully, revamping the space, that'll make a huge difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tremendous opportunity to, to really reinvigorate, and, and yeah, I just want to see you make the best use of it, absolutely, because, you know, we can all win together in this. One of the other small things, the Linear Park on Kingsdale, one of the things I saw from the South Bay Parkland Conservancy was activating that with exercise equipment or, or something like that. I've been looking at something like that for the Edison right-of-way, and if they can ever forget how to make it removable and also not stealable, we'll have it there, too, but tying that all together and having, you know, those types of exercises, I think that'd be a great little addition there.
It's a fantastic idea, and it's wide enough to activate it in that way. And, and one of the reasons why, why that width is so important is so that it's not just a sidewalk and then a green belt and then a curb. It is wide enough to activate either for fitness, for multiple paths, for mature landscaping, for respite parks, for pocket parks, for whatever we deem is valuable to the community. And it sounds like to me that that's connectivity for, for the pedestrians. It's certainly connectivity, and we heard the community speak of it today, for the cyclists and exercise, and getting out is going to be one of the things that completes all the different uses on the property.
That's great, and, and that connectivity is great. I mean, that, this site, you know, those community parks, all those different pieces to it, you have the farmer's market and all these other types of events there now. To make sure we have enough room for that in the future, because, for example, my kid's CDC class goes there for field trips, and it's great having these types of opportunities there. So the connectivity element, being able to potentially use Quimby fees to enhance bike path access, or other types of recreational access, and really integrating it, I think there's a lot to that. But that's all the feedback I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just chime in on the, the component or the mention that you make of the landscaping component on Kingsdale? It's interesting that you mentioned that the, the CDC classes, those are the, the before and after-school care classes for the elementary schools and junior high schools throughout Redondo Beach. And they do do field trips, and one that actually was done recently that actually had maybe something that might you want to consider for the landscaping design here, the Natural History Museum in downtown Los Angeles has a beautiful outdoor garden space that is very welcoming for families, for kids. It's also got an edible garden, and maybe taking some of the vision that they have there and see how that has worked and how attractive it is to families and to kids to, to, to sort of incorporate some of that feel into the landscaping and the design that you do there might be very...
That's a great idea, because it speaks exactly to what our intent is, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner, start some...
All right, third one.
So one of the things we're being asked to do is approve the vesting, vesting tentative maps this evening, and I'm looking through our municipal code, and the only definition I can find for vesting tentative map shall mean a tentative map for a residential subdivision under 10-1.5504. Can you lead me to where we gain the authority to...
State Subdivision Map Act. We have an, we have a, a need to update our local subdivision ordinance to conform with the State Subdivision Map Act. The map act, the map section of our municipal code does, at the very beginning of that section, cover other types of subdivision, including commercial condominiums and so forth.
Correct. The entire chapter one is on subdivisions, but I couldn't find anything in there referring to vesting tentative maps.
The vesting map law probably came along after the adoption of that section of our code. That means that state law preempts local law with respect to vesting maps.
I didn't miss it, it's just not there, and it does need to be there.
Clarifying, actually, Article 5, which addresses tentative maps, is hidden in Article 4. If you pull up the municipal code site, oddly enough, Article 5 that addresses tentative maps is within the subsection of Article 4.
Yes, that, too.
Wouldn't have found that one.
But if there is a question on vesting maps, I'm happy to answer it.
So establishment search. Let's see, it's, put on Article 4. It's applied, it in within Article 4. Sidebar. Where does it refer to the vesting, okay, it goes back to the same thing.
It goes, it provides additional details on tentative maps. But Aaron is correct.
Okay, so state law precludes it anyway. Okay, but that's why I want to clarify that. I didn't pick that up, and I missed that one. So going back to the statement of overriding conditions, you quote Code Section 65589.5, specifically, you use the ellipses there, and you take out some pretty significant parts of the true text, and I think it really takes it out of character. For example, it says, you know, in the statement of overriding conditions, it says, "Among the consequences of those actions, ellipses, reduced mobility, urban sprawl, excessive community air quality." Well, the true text, it says, "Amongst the consequences of those actions are discrimination against low-income and minority households, lack of housing to support the employment growth, imbalance in jobs and housing, and then further on to just reduced." So there's a lot more to this that is there that I think would apply to this.
But it's in, in there, it's just dot, dot, dot.
It's in the real, that's what I'm saying, it's not in there.
Yeah, but it's quoting the right quote. It's, it's in, it's in quotes, so it's quoting the whole thing.
Ultimately, this is staff's recommendation, but this is your statement of overriding considerations, so you're welcome to modify it as you see fit.
So you just want to take the ellipses out?
Let me state the full.
Take the ellipses out.
Yes. And, and state the full context, because there's, there's other places within the statement of overriding conditions that, that same theme occurs.
Because they're putting the relevant portion, but by only including the relevant portion, it doesn't mean that the rest of it doesn't apply, because the citation is still there, which goes back to the entirety of it.
Right.
So you don't have to, just like when you're citing a court case, you don't have to include the entire...
Court case.
Context of the opinion, you cite the relevant portion, or the statute, or what's going on.
When you're citing case law, you tend to pick, you cherry pick the ones that look good for you. Yeah.
You, well...
A good lawyer does.
Yes and no, until you lose credibility with the court.
Yeah, that's what I don't want to have happen here, is for this to lose credibility.
I don't think that the citation to a government code provision, or a statute, or an ordinance, or anything like that is cherry picking the provisions. You're still including the relevant portions. You're still including the citation of what we're required to comply with, and I don't think the ellipses makes that difference.
I'm going to stop there for tonight. I'm going to make a motion that we continue this hearing, because I think we've received a lot of new information tonight, and with the extent and impact and importance of this project and all of the different input we've had, I'd like some time to consider that fairly, equitably, extensively. So I'm making a motion to continue the hearing.
Commissioner, do you want to state a time that you want to continue it to? Are you, are you thinking the next meeting?
The next meeting would be, is what I would have thought, yes.
Okay. So your, your motion would be to continue this hearing to the next, correct?
We've already closed public testimony.
Correct.
We don't need to reopen that.
Correct. So you're making a motion to continue this public hearing to the next planning commission meeting, which is what date, Mr. Jones?
May 17th.
May 17th.
It's midnight. Good decisions don't get made after midnight, and I think we, we owe this, the due diligence to put the effort into it.
We have a motion.
I need a second.
I need a second.
You have a second.
Okay. Do you have any other questions at this time?
I will stop there.
Okay. Does anyone else? Let's see, we have a, let's see, do we have a motion for anything at this time?
Sorry, could we, is it possible to review the CUP modifications, or sorry, the conditions of acceptance modifications we've made for acceptable uses?
Yeah, that's the one question I had. What are we pulling out?
Absolutely. So we have something written up for your consideration. I think somebody's going to read it here in just a second, but I think we've got that figured out. Okay, so that is page 21 of the resolution, where we, we list uses that would be covered by the master conditional use permit. We, after speaking, I'm looking at this a little further. We'd actually like to, does somebody have the language?
I do have some amended language that we've worked on.
I do have some amended language that we've worked on. So this is condition number 22, that number 22 be amended to state that bars, cocktail lounges, liquor stores, and massage businesses be eliminated from the master conditional use permit except for alcohol beverage sales and services as part of a hotel, a restaurant, wine shop, or wine tasting bar with a wine shop, and that massage businesses may be utilized within day spas, beauty shops, and barber shops. And then thirdly, we talked about thrift shops, that vintage stores may be allowed selling clothing and other used high-quality goods within the site.
So that would be in the texts preceding the table?
Correct. It'll be, as we have additional regulations, that'll be noted right there in the approval.
So that would delete then bars and cocktail lounges, liquor stores, and thrift shops?
I think we'll insert an asterisk by all of those uses and then refer to the section below.
Okay.
Have we covered massage businesses that...
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So that's our suggested language. I don't think there's a need to reread it. Hopefully, we can have that on the record. Any other questions from the commission on conditions and amendment to conditions?
I just had a question, just very quickly, because the archaeological, because there's going to be a lot of digging. I don't know if we've done as much digging than...
Lot of digging for subterranean parking.
What's our history with archaeological stuff?
It's not anticipated that there will be any discoveries on this site.
Have we in the past?
The nearest thing was...
This is a lot of digging.
The only site, and I can't tell you particular sites because those are protected. The Cal land sites and particular sites are protected, but within a mile of the site, there was, there were some fossil remains discovered. It's precautionary, but this is, this is the latest required condition to observe and record.
Talking about the South Bay tar pits.
The depth of excavation isn't, is not substantially into a layer that would contain those fossil remnants.
I would note that the EIR did conservatively conclude for paleontological resources significant
before mitigation.
It's still in there.
So there is a mitigation measure to address paleontological.
Yeah. We have that.
I saw it all. Yeah. I was just kind of, I just thought, oh, okay.
So we have amended a number of different sections. We've updated condition 19 to match resolution 201801 PC 0...
Norer.
Yeah. Condition number 31. I have it written down here. We've amended condition 22 with the additional footnoting. And are there any other conditions?
Oh, 19, right? You mentioned 19.
19. Replaced with the language from the Northrop Grumman Resolution.
With the addition of the officer.
Yes.
With the addition of weekly community updates and project website.
And the project website will be listed on the...
Correct. We're actually combining 19 with the 31 from the Northrop Grumman project.
Correct. And answer 24 hours a day.
And just like we did with Northrop, should we, can we strike 29?
29.
Material storage on public streets. That's not going to happen.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we can.
Yep. By the way.
The, we didn't pick up any other further amendments to conditions?
Oh, Aaron, on page 14, there's referenced, there's a reference under Section 11 about approval have been proposed and incorporated into the attached draft resolution. I would delete the attached draft and replace that with this.
Yes, we would like to...
And there was a typo also on one of the code numbers.
That was in the statement of overriding positions where 65963 was misquoted. It should be 65863. Is that correct, Tyson?
Correct.
Yes, we got that.
Slight modification to condition 8 where we reference the inclusion of turf to the maximum extent allowed under the landscaping provisions.
Right.
Eight.
Two. We're standing right now. Okay. Has it been pointed out to me the city attorney would like us to state all these things while a motion is on the floor? Otherwise, we're going to have to restate them again. So if anybody has a motion, that would help us not have to say all this one more time.
One quick question, actually, before we do that. I meant to ask this a little bit earlier. For condition number three, where we have the carve out of the 5% for teachers and military, do we have similar concerns with regard to police and fire?
Oh, that's a good point.
You're spreading 15 units pretty thin, then.
Well, I mean, as much as I, to be honest, I'm far more concerned about our teachers than I am with the military because they get this stipend. And also, to be honest, if they're, if they're not active and they're working for Northrop, they're probably got a much better salary than our teachers do. So as much as, I would love to have five for each, frankly, but I'm just wondering whether we're carving out and not including those public servants to their detriment that should have been included in there.
So this is a voluntary contribution from the applicant and we're not requiring or demanding that this be provided. I think if the applicant wished to accept adding additional groups, that could be done now.
We'd be happy to add police and fire.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So if we have a motion, then we can reread all the things that we've just read.
All right. So...
One other modification I might make a motion for is on page 14, item 1, modifying it from up to 50,000 square feet of commercial office use in place of 50,000 square feet of commercial retail, increasing that to 175,000.
Can you repeat that?
Would you mind repeating the language?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so up, so currently it says up to 50,000 square feet of commercial office use in place of 50,000 square feet of commercial retail, changing that to up to 175,000 square feet of commercial office use in place of 175,000 square feet of commercial retail.
That would be fine with the applicant. Thank you.
Because that's before we get the traffic impacts. All right. Right, exactly.
Hit significance thresholds.
One moment while Farren Peers hands out a memorandum related to the 175,000 square feet.
It needs to be part of the record if you're going to include that provision.
Motion received and filed.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Still ordered.
And I would recommend that the traffic consultant briefly summarize the findings from that memorandum.
Okay.
To summarize the findings, a sensitivity test was conducted for the project, which transferred additional retail space over to office for a maximum of 175,000 square feet of office space. Trip generation calculations were conducted along with intersectional service analysis and determined that no additional significant intersection impacts would occur with the 175,000 square feet of office. Additionally, emergency access, design features, bicycle and pedestrian conditions were also reviewed as part of this analysis. It was compared back to the proposed project and alternative for one.
Perfect.
Thank you. One of the things I have to remind myself is that the current gallery was designed back before there was an internet or mobile devices or Amazon and all these things. So trying to make sure that we give the flexibility to adjust with times without boxing into a specific solution. Thank you.
And we want Class A office space, of course.
Creative Class A space.
The industrial year he is, right?
I have one last thing I want to see before we move forward. So I'm just concerned about this litigious nature of Longdale, which I see, I think they're no longer here, but, and the lack of response from Torrance. How are we going to handle all that? Because that's a lot of...
We've fully responded to them.
No, we don't need any more lawsuits in this city. My God, it's...
We have fully responded and in 60 pages worth of response to the questions raised, we have met with them and we have performed our responsibilities, so.
So our legal staff feels that we are...
We believe so.
We believe that the EIR is defensible, it's complete, and that it supports the staff's recommendation.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Make a motion?
For the commission's assistance, there's a recommended motion on the screen.
Yeah, we're all like, what language do we use at this point?
Move to adopt the draft resolution certifying the final EIR approving the water supply assessment, environmental findings, statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring reporting program, granting the request for conditional use permit, planning commission design review of variance, and approving vesting tentative tract map number 74481.
I'll second.
Well, wait. No, 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 no.
Add your motion subject to the following...
With a friendly amend, with a friendly amendment?
Subject to the following modifications.
Subject, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So now we have to go through the whole thing again.
Oh, okay. I will attempt to reiterate everything that was discussed. So it's subject to the following modifications. Condition number one, that the modification, instead of the 50,000 square feet of commercial office uses, it be changed to 175,000 square feet. On condition number three...
Just before the...
Two, 175.
And just before that, Cheryl, deletion of the attached draft, replacing that with this.
Correct. There's a new draft that would replace the existing one. On condition number three, that you add the police and fire to that 5% market rate residential units.
Can I clarify, that's police and fire for Redondo Beach or?
Yes.
Any cities?
Redondo Beach.
You allowed to specify that has to be in Redondo Beach?
I was being talked to by the audience. I didn't hear the question.
The 5% market rate residential units, that would be for Redondo Beach police and fire.
Jennifer's asking if we can exclude...
Can we specify that it's solely for Redondo Beach?
We can. We can try a local preference.
Yes, perfect.
We got Redondo Beach teachers.
That would be the preference.
Okay. So it would be a modification to add Redondo Beach police and fire departments. The third modification would be in the overriding considerations document, that the reference to the government code section 65863 instead of 65963. On page 14, there is the elimination of the words draft.
I got that one.
And it would be replaced with this. The fourth modification is on section, condition number, I'm going to go backwards now, 29. And that condition would be eliminated.
And the subsequent conditions renumbered?
Yes.
And what was that?
Renumbering.
The subsequent conditions renumbered.
Oh, well, obviously, yes. All right.
Instead of having 39, we'd have 38.
Eliminate 29, renumber 38.
Correct. And everything else would be renumbered. And then there would be a modification to condition 22. And I will have Stacy read that modification.
That condition 22 be amended to state that bars, cocktail lounges, liquor stores, and massage businesses be eliminated from the master conditional use permit except for alcoholic beverage sales and services as part of a hotel, restaurant, wine shop, and tasting room, and that massage services be allowed as a part of day spas, beauty shops, and barber shops, and that vintage stores may be allowed selling clothing and other used high-quality goods be allowed within the site.
And there's an additional, and everything will be renumbered. And then there's an additional modification to condition number 19, and we'll have Sean read that.
Yes. Condition number 19 will read that a project information officer shall be assigned to the site during construction. The officer shall provide community weekly updates through a project website page as well as periodic email blast to interested parties. A construction hotline phone number shall be dedicated for the project with a live person 24 hours, seven days per week. And then we pick up with the condition 31 from the Northrop Grumman Resolution. If I need to, I'll read that resolution number. Resolution number 2018-01-PCR-001, condition 31. Do I need to read that one again?
Yes.
Oh, right. That a construction sign shall be posted with construction days and hours listed along with a 24-hour contact name and phone number clearly listed on the sign. The signage will also include the names, phone numbers, project websites, and email addresses of the assigned city of Redondo Beach Community Development Department staff. Signage will also include Redondo Beach Police Department contact information in the event the reportable action occurs during non-business hours. The content number and location of construction information signage shall be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department prior to the issuance of grading and/or building permits. If noise, traffic, vibration, air quality, odor, and air or other construction-related complaints are reported, the Building Division Code Enforcement Department will investigate and follow standard due process procedures for remediation that may include but is not limited to the immediate issuance of a stop work notice until corrective measures, as determined by the Community Development Department, are completed. In the event that complaints are registered with the Redondo Beach Police Department during non-business hours, they will be referred to the Building Division Code Enforcement Department at the start of the next business day for investigation. Period.
Thank you.
More, Cheryl?
I think those are all the modifications I noted. If the, if I missed anything.
One more. One more. On condition eight, which is the landscaping plan submittal, rather than read the whole thing, after the last sentence, we would add that the maximum amount of turf possible shall be installed.
I want to say real turf because turf is not a good word anymore. Turf is going to be the fake stuff.
We add that sentence to, to condition eight.
All right. So I...
Second. A motion?
We have a motion. We have a second.
There may be an additional condition at the very end about bike, a bike connectivity study to... No? No, we don't need that one? Okay.
Answer.
Never mind.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. The next order of business is public participation on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Sure, I'll speak, although it was just on the agenda, but you wouldn't let me address the motion, so I'm going to address it now.
Morning.
And I'm not, I had nothing to do with adding the military to that, but I am intimately involved, a neighbor did, and I know what was meant, and you guys missed the point here, okay? It was because of the importance of the military base to the whole South Bay economy, that Redondo Beach was trying to show how much we supported them by providing a method where some of their young guys who come out, and maybe they're only coming out for a year or two, would be able to find a place and send, because the, I believe that the developers agreed to not require security deposits and stuff if they had to leave and go overseas. And it was to give them all that kind of stuff. It wasn't just a salary or, oh, they get an allowance, they can afford it. It was all those other things, too. And again, we were really trying to show the military base that, how important they were to our economy because it's been threatened that they would leave sometimes. And so by diluting the whole thing, sure, there are a lot of people that, that are important to the South Bay, but it was to, just to show the appreciation to the military. And so I think by adding all those other things, you sufficiently diluted it that that was lost. And so that's my opinion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to say something else. I've asked this before. When you guys make an, and I, this is in general, but when it comes... commission or the council makes an obvious misinterpretation that the member of the audience catches, it doesn't seem like we have a way to address it real time, okay? And I really wish we did, because if I had said this before, whether you agreed with me or not, you could have straightened it out if you wanted to, or you could have ignored it. But now, it's made, and I didn't have a chance to say anything until it's maybe too late.
Thank you. Any commission items or referrals to staff? Items for staff? None. And council action on planning commission matters? None, okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Didn't even have to ask. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Getting adjourned.